Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Yeah.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Sika.
Yeah.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafor is not here yet. We're hoping he joins us on Zoom. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor President Winslow.
Here. Under the provisions of open meeting law, for those who are viewing attendance, please be informed that UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meeting. And so just be aware, there will be an audio and video recordings of this meeting. And then, actually, my call tonight is to take out of order and go to item number six, appointments in elections, unless anybody has objections to that, so we can deal with the appointments. Anybody? Okay.
Paper four, ten dash twenty-four, Mayor's Appointment. Odalisa Macedo, 22 Oxford Street, Malden, as the Human Resource Director, term to expire February 2nd, 2028, and to commence upon confirmation by the City Council.
Okay. Let's see. All right. Yeah, let me put the podium mic on. Okay. And then, we have our current Human Resource Director, Anthony Ciccarelli, to introduce the candidate for the replacement. So Anthony, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to present to all of you the Mayor's Appointment of Odalisa Macedo. She's a Malden resident. She's been here for 28 years. She comes to us professionally from the city of Chelsea. She was there for about eight years. She has tremendous experience in human resources, different levels, different factors, facets of HR. We, as my email to all of you stated, we had a whole process that we honor here for all our hires, but in this case, we formed an interview committee. We had two rounds of interviews. We had five different people doing the interviews, and it was unanimous choice by all the people in the second round to recommend to the Mayor that he appoint Ms. Macedo. And so it's my pleasure to present her to all of you for confirmation.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Macedo, just state your name for the record and your address, and then we'll, if you have a little statement, and then if the councilors have questions, we'll go from there.
So my name is Odalisa Macedo. I reside at 22 Oxford Street in Malden, Apartment One.
Okay. And a little bit about your interest in the position and your experience.
Okay. So I have worked at the, with the city of Chelsea for eight years in progressive roles, currently, or the HR manager, in line with the Assistant Director under a comp and class. And this amazing opportunity was presented, and I feel honored by the appointment.
Does anybody have any particular questions? Let's see, we got Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't really have any questions, but I just wanted to say that you and I have a mutual friend, Alan, from the synagogue down on Bryant Street, and he's been singing your praise all weekend long. So I just want to say congratulations, and, you know, it's great that, you know, we're getting somebody new. I mean, Mr. Ciccarelli has been around for quite some time now, and, you know, he was actually my substitute teacher, so it's kind of weird up here seeing him retire now. So, I don't know. But, that being said, you know, I would just want, I mean, for me, anyway, just welcome you aboard, and if you're half as good as what Alan said you were, then we've got no problems here. So, congratulations on getting this far with us. Thank you.
Thank you, and I shouldn't tell you I paid him, but it was less than $50.
I knew there was some kind of payment there when it came to Alan. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Hi. Thank you. I just wanted to say, welcome.
Thank you.
And if, you know, if you ever need anything, we are here to support you in any way. I'll reach out, because I'd really love to meet you. So I'll send an email. That's it. Just keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
And I look forward to our meeting. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes, also, congratulations, and I really appreciated the depth of professional HR experience that you have. I see you're a part of the Society for Human Resource Management, and I know SHRM is really the industry standard. So that's great to see. The question I had for you is that, in the, you know, in the past year, the city has moved its DEI Coordinator and Language Access to be a part of human resources. And I wanted to ask you specifically about your experience working with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and what vision you have for that include, as part of the HR function in Malden.
Okay. So I had some experience in Chelsea with the DEI person. We do not have a language person there, but I'm looking forward to partnering with both of these employees. I've met with Kashana. I have not met with the language person, but I'm looking forward to working with them at making sure that the city is looking at all of our options to diversity, equity, and inclusion, of course.
All right. Counselor McDonald, anything else?
Oh, thank you. Well, I will just add, you know, I've been a member of the city's REACH team, where once a month, we go to meet with other municipalities to work on racial equity initiatives. I see two other members of the REACH team. Oh, no, you're here today. You're here now, Caroline. So that's three other members of the REACH team. And, and, so, which is largely city staff. But you've had Crystal Morano from HR, who's been participating in that, and so I think there's some good pieces coming through that collaborative project about how to support and maintain and, and really grow a diverse city workforce. So I'm really excited about that. I suspect, I speak for my colleagues when I say, I think this body is excited about those opportunities and needs in this community, and look forward to working with you to see how we can support you in implementing those pieces on behalf of our residents and our city services. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to it as well. Thank you.
Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have known Odalisa for many years now, with our kids who had gone to the Ferryway School, so we've had that interaction. She was really active in the, in the school, and so I'm really just excited, when I saw her tonight, and I was excited that you'd be joining us in a different way. And so I'm really happy, and I would be happy to make a motion to, to approve this, to confirm this.
Okay. Counselor Condon wanted to say something, and then we'll do the motion.
No, I just want to say, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, but welcome, and if we can be of any help, we're here for that. Okay? So, thanks. Have a good career.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
So unless there's any further questions on Counselor Crowe's motion to approve this appointment, and as, I just want to say, as Chair of Personal Appointments, I'm fine with doing this on the floor. I don't see a need to send us to personal appointments. And one reason why we invited Odalisa here tonight was just to make sure everybody could ask some questions if you had it, but we, we thought to, she'd like to start next week, and so voting tonight, we'll make sure that all goes smoothly for her. So, so on Counselor Crowe's motion to approve this appointment, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, we will take a roll call vote.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor President Winslow.
Yes. So you are hereby appointed. So now, I think the departments have to come into you and turn, sign the books, so.
Yeah, we'll talk with Chuck and make sure she gets all the important documents signed.
Okay, well, good. Welcome onboard. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you for making this painless.
Thank you. All right. Don't be deceived, right? All right. So, all right. So let's go back to the regular agenda. Next item is public comment. Public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to a subject manager relevant to the evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
I don't believe we have anybody signed up. Maybe Clerk Cagnon can double check for me, but I do have some emails we can read into the record.
Okay. All right, so no, nobody speaking, but then, all right, so then, could you, Clerk will proceed to.
Indeed, yes.
Read the comments. Right, thank you.
Okay. So. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. The first one says, "I am a Ward One resident, and I've been concerned about past proposals for artificial turf at Roosevelt Park slash Salemwood School. My understanding is that the artificial turf is not going forward, but the status of funds set aside for this project is not clear. I understand that Ari Taylor is bringing forward Paper 412-24 to get clarity on this and begin to move forward with the necessary remediation work, which should not involve covering the whole playground with plastic. I hope this can move forward. Thank you for your work on this. Signed, Chuck McCollum at 22 Parker Street." Hello, I would like to know what is going on with Roosevelt Park and what the status is on the funds below. It is critical that we address Roosevelt Park with its environmental and health hazards for the city's residents. It is strange to see other fields in Malden being renovated with no progress with Roosevelt Park. What is the plan with the park moving forward? Section 108 HUD loan, 1.2 million, CPA funds, 1.45 million, city free cash, 1.292 million, city bond, $966,000. Please approve Order 412-24 at tonight's council meeting in order to move forward with the park. Thank you. Signed, Hugh Nguyen of 8 Cross Street, Malden. Dear councilors, please approve Order 412-24 that the Finance Committee invites staff from the Office for Strategic Planning and Community Development to appear in committee to present an update on all the funding sources surrounded the remediation of soil at Roosevelt Park. This was sponsored by Ari Taylor, who is the Ward Five counselor. As a part of the now canceled Roosevelt Park Improvement Project, there were city funds earmarked specifically for the removal of the contaminated soil. There are also questions surrounding the funds that were raised for the improvement project itself. Were the funds returned unused as the project was canceled? Section 108 HUD loan, 1.2 million, CPA funds, 1.45 million, city free cash, 1.292 million, and city bond, $966,000 represent the funding sources that were allocated to the now canceled Roosevelt Park project. As an adjacent neighbor to Roosevelt Park, I would like to see an accounting of the funds that were allocated for the canceled project in the remediation of the lead-contaminated soil by the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. Given the large sums of money that have yet to be accounted for, I think it reasonable to have the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development offer the Finance Committee some transparency as to the status of the funding in question. Transparency builds trust. It reminds me of a favorite quote, "Trust but verify," by Ronald Reagan. Lara Thompson, 53, Placedead Road. I'm writing in on my support to approve Order 412-24. There are $5 million of taxpayer funds that need to be accounted for by our City Council. The CPC is making payments, including interest, on funds for a canceled project. I urge the City Council to send this order to the Finance Committee for further discussion and inquiry. The public would like to know the status of these funds and what is the plan for the park moving forward. What is the status of these funds? I've already read them twice, so I'm not going to repeat them again. Stephanie Alberto, 409 Bryant Street. Dear Malden City Council, please vote to support Paper 412-24 in order that the Finance Committee invites staff from the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development to appear in committee. Earlier this year, after the April 2024 cancellation of the Roosevelt Park Improvement Project, Malden News Network submitted public record requests seeking similar information. Full reporting on the allocation of the use of local, state, and federal funds from any appropriation, free cash, city budget, community preservation act grant, private or public, or borrowing city bond for this project is long overdue. As you know, the city has been aware of its remediation responsibilities at Roosevelt Park since at least December 2019, and those remain incomplete. Please ask the Finance Committee to report back to the full council in a public and open forum with recommendation actions related to the roughly $5 million in taxpayer funds allocated for this canceled project. Please make the Finance Committee's full recommendations and report part of the public record. Thank you sincerely, Brian Delacy, in association with Malden News Network, 1 Earl Street. Dear Malden City Council, I am writing today in support of moving Order 412-24 to the City Council Finance Committee for further discussion and inquiry. These funds are currently in limbo since the cancellation of the Roosevelt Park Improvement Project last April. The Finance Committee needs to ask more questions concerning the status of Section 108 HUD loan and the approval or disapproval by HUD to use these funds for a new plan in design for this project. The CPA bond is currently being paid for the canceled project. Could this funding now be used to remove the contaminated soil and/or to develop a new design which aligns with the Malden Climate Action Plan? What is the status of the free cash appropriation and bond? How will this funding now be handled as this project is moved forward and redesigned? These all are important questions for nearly $5 million of taxpayer funding, which needs to be discussed. Thank you sincerely, Kathleen Sullivan, 27 Oliver Street. I am writing to support the request of Friends of Roosevelt Park for a financial status report regarding funds allocated for the park project. While I am hopeful that the delay means the project is leaning towards a natural grass solution, I am also interested in learning what has become of the allocated, allocated funds at this time. Thank you, Susan Lawrence, 176 Glenwood Street. Dear City Council, I would like to know what happened to the $5 million of taxpayer funds that appeared to be unaccounted for publicly by our City Council. I ask that you please remove and remediate the lead-contaminated soil at Roosevelt slash Salemwood School Park. Please approve Order 412-24 at tonight's meeting. The community deserves to know about the status of these funds listed below, which we've already read into the record. What is the plan moving forward? Why is community engagement missing from this process? Respectfully, Erga Parat, 93 Oliver Street, Malden. And that is the last of the.
Okay.
Public comments.
All right. Thank you very much, Clerk. And then, the next order of business is our consent agenda. So this evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, one appointment and two communications to be placed on file, and one council reappointment to be approved. Does any councilor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion? All right. Not seeing any requests for further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Sika. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. We need a roll call vote, because there's a confirmation.
Okay, so, and, all right, we actually need a roll call vote, so, all right. So on Counselor Crowe's motion, seconded by J.D. Sika, we'll take a roll call vote for the consent agenda.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor President Winslow.
Yes. So the consent agenda is approved. The next order of business will skip up to seven, which is hearings and petitions. I just have a question on this one. Clerk, you mentioned that we hope that Counselor Spatafor would participate here.
He's still hung up in a meeting. It doesn't appear that he's logged in here. The only two participants that I can see, I think, are probably ourselves and Alex Pratt. Yeah, so Counselor Spatafor is not in attendance at this time.
Should we go on to other orders of business, so that we can see if he can, we just have a couple more? Do you think we should, should we just, well, we, the, setting the tax rate? Should we, my suggestion is.
I mean, it doesn't hurt if you, if you want to take the next couple of papers.
My suggestion is, we would just skip to the next order of business, just motions and orders, and we'll come back to the hearing if, and, when we get to that. So why don't we take up, if anybody has any objections, we're just going to go to item eight, and we'll come back to item seven when we're done with those. Right? So, yeah.
Paper four, eleven dash twenty-four, resolved. That it is the sense of the City Council that the Mayor file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs through the Parkland Acquisition and Renovation for Communities Grant Program for Phase Two improvements to Dever Park, sponsored by Paul Condon.
All right. Counselor Condon for the paper.
I believe Alex is here to give us a rundown on where we are and where we hope to be very shortly. Alex.
There we go. It's coming. All right, just give us a second, Alex, so that the public can see the presentation. All right, there we go. Great. Thanks, Caroline. One second, let me get your mic on. All right, there you go.
Thank you. Alex Pratt, LSU PCD. Thank you all for having us here tonight. So we're very excited that we got awarded a, another park grant. This is our primary state funding for a lot of our park projects. You've seen them before. We get about one every year. We're very glad to have received another one this year. It's a $500,000 grant, so this year, we're proposing using this, this grant for Dever Park Phase Two. So I'll give a brief history of Dever Park and talk about the Phase Two improvements that we have coming forward. So Dever Park, as many of you know, is the city's largest park. We had a master plan process in 2020, started in 2019 and was completed in 2020, that envisioned a number of improvements to the park, as shown here. And in more detail, I'll kind of show you what we did already as part of Phase One improvements, which were completed last year. I know many of you were able to attend the ribbon cutting or have been in the park since then, and have forgotten to see just how wonderful the Phase One improvements were. We accomplished a lot in Phase One. Obviously, a new flagship playground near Emerald Street, a splash pad, one and a half basketball courts, preserving these really big, beautiful trees in the center of the park. We have a new plaza on Davidson Way, a new community plaza for events and things like that, new walkways throughout the park, 38 new trees, which I know Counselor Condon is a big fan of the trees we're able to bring to Dever Park, and we're glad to be able to bring so many in this phase. We reconfigured the parking, so instead of one big unstriped lot, we took the same amount of spaces, and we actually, I think, eked out an extra space even beyond that, for the street park, in which it makes the park more accessible for all sorts of users without sacrificing parking. And then we have site lighting and irrigation for the Phase One area, including that north-south walkway, and then around on the Fowles Way side, so you have lighting throughout, as well as irrigation in those areas. And here's a big one that we did not expect. When we started the project, we removed 1,700 tons of ash. So we did not know that we were going to find that ash there as part of Phase One. You'll hear when I talk about Phase Two that we are going in eyes wide open, and we have some plans to do some more testing as we are early in the design phase, so that we know what we're getting ourselves into in terms of whether there's more ash elsewhere on the site. So here's some pictures of the Phase One improvements. In the top left, you have the new playgrounds. I think Mayor Christensen is the first person who went down that slide, but I think a million kids in Malden have gone down it since. You see in the top right, you see the splash pad being enjoyed by children, and our friend, Pete Queso. And in the bottom, you see, of course, the walkways and kind of the green areas, as well as many of the new trees, benches, lighting, et cetera, that have been planted here. And I know Counselor Condon's really excited to be doing Fourth of July events from this park and from these improvements as well. Other images of the Phase One improvements are the basketball court, new signage. This basketball court, we painted with a higher, a lighter color blue, so that it reflects more sunlight and more heat off of it. This is something we're trying to do on a number of our hardtop surfaces and play areas across the city to be more climate resilient, so we're really excited to bring it here to Dever, and you'll expect to see that, you can expect to see that in other parks across the city. Bottom left, you have the community plaza facing Davidson Way, and then you have another view of the Dever Park playground from the Emerald Street park, Emerald Street entrance to the park. So that was Phase One. For Phase Two, we're also trying to tackle a lot. We want to rebuild the existing multipurpose field, to have a regulation soccer field for, and that's a regulation high school soccer field, that will remain a multi-use field that can be used for other sports as well, so it's not just soccer, but it will fill in a big need for high school soccer to have a field. Regulation softball fields for high school as well. And as, as doing those two projects together, we're able to reconfigure the soccer field so that the angle of the field is better when the sun is setting, so it's easier on the players' eyes as much as possible. And the softball field will be pulled back, and you'll see it in the next slide when I show a picture of all of this, is pulled back a bit to the south, to the southwest, to allow room for that soccer field to meet the regulation lengths and widths. We'll also be bringing in amenities related to the softball field and the soccer field. That includes the walkways, bleachers, engrading, irrigation, et cetera. And then irrigation for this whole, all the, all the landscape areas affected in Phase Two will tie back to the irrigation system in Phase One, so we can maintain our grass areas, and then a new asphalt perimeter walkway extending that beyond, or around Emerald Street. So this is what that looks like. It's one thing to read it, it's another to look at it. So this is the way that that soccer field will be oriented to better use, but better address the sunlight issue in the evenings. And that softball field as well, these two uses can coexist, not at the same time, perhaps, but that we can get so much use out of one field that it can be a regulation field for a number of different sports. It's definitely something that we're excited about doing. The other thing I want to mention here, so the soccer field right now, one of the challenges with this field is it drains towards the center, which is the result of just topography issues and things of that nature. That, of course, creates a lot of maintenance issues, and so when it rains, it does not drain properly, so we are going to create it like a proper field and have it kind of crown, almost like you think of a road, crowns in the center and then drains outward. That's how we anticipate the soccer field draining, and of course, there'll be drainage structures associated with that as well. We're going to start, I mentioned the environmental issues we ran into on Phase One. We're going to be doing that as well for Phase, we're going to be walking into Phase Two with the experience we gained in Phase One, knowing that there is going to be some unknowns there with contamination. So our next step is really to engage environmental testing services and to do testing in the park area. This will tell us really what we're dealing with. Are we going to find more ash and soil? How much, where? And this will really inform our design. It will also inform our budget. We are optimistic that we will not find as much ash and soil as we found in Phase One, but we will likely find some. So that's really, it's a, it's an X-factor here, and you can expect to see that the scope of the project of Phase Two could vary based on whatever it is we find from that testing. So that's why we're doing that early, early on in the process, so we know what we're getting into and can make adjustments from there. So once we have that information, we'll do final design and permitting this over the winter, and we're looking to bid the project in the spring and begin construction May or June. And then this, the park would be offline essentially, so the, the park could be used through this spring, through the end of this spring cycle, in terms of the spring sports season, and then would be offline likely until the end of spring 2026, because we want to make sure that the grass has time to grow and take and recover as part of our overall field maintenance strategy and working with the Rec Department and the DPW to make sure that we're not pummeling our fields into the ground before we give them some rest and making sure that we have, when we have new fields, that they have enough time to take so that they can support the heavy demand from our park users. In terms of our budget, we're looking at about a $1.77 million budget. That includes the $500,000 park grant, CPA application that we've already submitted to the Community Preservation Committee. They have a hearing on that application on November 20th, so it's coming up. And then we'll be applying for CDBG funds as well in early 2025 when that application becomes available. Again, this is the project budget as it stands now. Depending on the environmental, we might be feeling that we can add, and depend, we might be able to add to the scope, or we might have to take away, depending on what, what the environmental unknowns end up turning out to be. So that's Phase Two of Dever Park in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just wanted to just, just for my own purposes of homework here. So, you're saying that the total project cost of this project was 1.77 million total?
Uh, for Phase Two.
For Phase Two. What was the, I wasn't here during this whole thing, but what was, what was the cost of Phase One?
I don't have a number off the top of my head, Counselor, but I'm happy to send it to you in an email before I get home tonight.
And you mentioned about CDBG funds, right? You're looking to get some of, how much funds are you looking for to get from CDBG?
So, this was the, the proposed breakdown of, of funding, of funds from different funding sources, so 500,000 from CDBG.
For the second phase?
For the second phase.
I just want it clear. So, the CDBG funds are used for low to moderate income neighborhoods?
Yes.
Or has that changed? The map still?
That's still the case.
That's still, and the low and moderate income neighborhood over there is where for that park?
Much of this area is within a low mod area.
What is it?
Most of this area, of this population area is a low mod, falls within that category of low mod area.
Which one, which area, what population?
You're asking about the?
Yeah, I'm asking about like, what is the low to moderate income population in that area that qualifies for 500,000 for the second phase? And how much of CDBG funds are used for the first phase? Do you know that?
I don't know off the top of my head. Again, I can get that Phase One budget for you tonight. No, much of, much of this area and the, the service area of this park falls within, well within HUD requirements for low mod, low mod areas. That's true increasingly across the city. This also would qualify as a citywide park. So, you could, you could qualify this park as low mod area either way, either because it's serving a low mod neighborhood or because it's serving a low mod city. And obviously, a park of this size is a citywide park.
Okay. Well, I know it's a, it's been a great project. I know Counselor Condon has been working diligently on that and you guys have done a great job over there. I actually seen Phase One, so I congratulate yous on a, on a well-done job over there and I congratulate my colleague, Counselor Condon, for all his hard work that he's put into over there. So, I think it's going to be an exciting thing for folks once the Phase Two piece of it is complete. So, I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Colan Hayes?
Thank you very much. The park is looking great. I agree. I have been down to Dever Park many times and seen a lot of kids playing there and it looks fantastic. So, the Phase Two, I just have questions about, I may have asked you this before at a different presentation, but the ash that you were talking about. So, where was that found and what exactly is ash?
Sure. Let's see, let's look at Phase One at this map here. I mean, if, yeah, it'll, great, you can see my cursor. So, we found ash in this area. A lot in the playground area.
Is that the splash pad?
Um, near the splash pad in the playground, yes. So, this is the splash pad and then this blue and orange areas of playground. It was also found some in Davidson Way, which was repaved kind of in tandem with this project and so we were able to remove a lot of ash from Davidson Way as well and from the plaza area and to a lesser extent down the, down the pathway as well. Now, the locations for the ash are, if you really wanted to look at where every amount came from, that's available on the Mass DEP website. But broadly speaking, that's where, where the ash came from. Now, ash and fill or, or ash is, this ash was likely created by municipal waste. Excuse me, sorry, one second. So, this ash was likely created by municipal waste and there were also buildings on what is now Dever Park. There were buildings on that land from like 1920, 1930s, 1940s. There was actually a, I'm not sure if it was a proper street, but there was something of a street. Not exactly where the north-south walkway is, but there are maps that show a street in that area. So, if you were, if you can imagine back before we had JRM and these other trash municipal waste companies, municipalities would burn trash and then they'd have all of this ash from burning trash. And that was how cities across the country and across the world dealt with their trash. And then that also became a natural solution at the time for how to address low-lying areas, wetland areas. If there's a hole in the ground, you need to bring it up to grade to build something. A lot of, that is how a lot of ash got in the grounds because that was the practice at the time. They did not have the benefit of our scientific knowledge today to realize that that is not something we should do. So, yeah, this, that's likely the source of the ash at this park. It's hard to say for certain. There's a lengthy report that was done that we do when we do environmental testing to figure out what was the source of this. And that kind of goes into more detail.
Okay. So, the, that makes horrible sense, but yeah, so, the, because my next question was going to be, is that similar to urban fill? What we found in other areas of the park, would it be like urban fill that was burned or like, is it similar?
I would say it's similar in the sense that it's something that we need to check to see whether or not we have to remove and to make sure it's at a safe level. I am not a licensed site professional or an environmental scientist, so I can't give you a better answer than that, but I'd say that they're both regulatory definitions under the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. They're both things that we hire professionals to look at.
Okay. And then the other question, you might have the same answer, would be if you, when you did find that, how far down did you have to go to remediate that? And how were the funds allocated? Like, where did you go? Is that what this grant is for to get rid of?
Uh, so the, the soils removed as part of Phase One, were removed as part of Phase One, and this is a Phase Two grant. So, you can kind of think of them as separate, separate projects if you want to make it clearer. You guess how far down did we go? The answer, the short answer was it depended on what was required of the, by DEP. And the more detailed answer is something that our licensed site professional could answer.
And that's on the website?
I can send you a copy of the report we did, which is on the Mass DEP website.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I can send you a copy of it. It's, it's dense stuff, so it took, it took me some time to, to read through and I had questions about it, but it, it speaks to those specifics.
Sure. And then the la, that, the question about the funding, I guess, did you need to ask, like, did the OSPCD have to ask for more funding to remediate that?
We did.
Okay.
We did. And part of that, you know, when this project first was bid, we said, oh, wow, this, this bid came in under the expected. We were feeling really good about it.
Yeah.
And then that quickly unraveled when we found 1,700 tons of ash.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So, it was a lot, a lot. And fortunately, we were in a period where in the city, we had some flexibility with ARPA funds. And so, this ate up all of our, of our cushion, all of our contingency, and then there was still some, some ARPA funding that had to go into filling that gap. We won't have the same luxury in Phase Two. And so, that's why it's so important for us to go in now and do testing now so we get a better sense of what's happening.
Okay. Great. So, that came from ARPA funds?
Much of it did.
Okay. Great. I'm just trying to think about which bucket that came out of. You know how we have all the ARPA fund committees, like where that came from or just out of the administration or OSPCD?
Yeah, it'll be, I don't remember which bucket it came from, but that will be on the City's Transparency Center where all the ARPA funds are allocated and you can see under each committee how they've awarded their funds. So, you can see that there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Counselor Condon, your turn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This is the final phase of a lot of teamwork that we're trying to put together. Everything really, except for the ash, that was the one big surprise we had. No expectation that there would be 1,700 tons of trash removed, but we didn't lose that much time, really. What could have happened because, just because of the teamwork, keeping the neighbors informed. They did a great job. We had Janelle DeVits out there running around, helped trying to make sure that everybody was doing the right thing. She did a tremendous job and I certainly want to recognize her for staying with the team. So, I'm hoping that we can move on to this final phase. We got the money in place that we'll need. And I know that we don't want any holdups because everything's gone so smoothly. Neighbors, neighbors are thrilled, parents are thrilled that the, there's so many young children down there. It's just been amazing the way we've been able to come together as a community and they're coming from all over Malden, so it's just not an Edgeworth park. I don't think any of these parks can be neighborhood parks anymore because all the kids are from different parts of the area. If Keastead turns out to be the better park, they'll be going from Edgeworth to Keastead. And that's what you like to see, you know? So, I'm just hoping that this final phase doesn't get held up by anything. We want to move on. We want to get it done and we want to let the kids get in there and play because that's what they, where they belong. So, thank you. I'm hoping that you'll support it tonight so we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Condon. I still have some more lights, so Counselor McDonald?
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. First, I will say that the city's very helpful. ClearGov site does specify the current funding sources for the Dever Park project Phase One. That include, I'll just save you the trouble, Alex.
Thank you very much.
That includes $1 million in city bond, which I remember us authorizing, $1 million in ARPA funds, $400,000 for this park, state park grant, P A R C, $300,000 in CDBG money and $250,000 from a state legislative earmark. Does that sound right?
It does sound right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No problem. I, I'm very supportive of this project. It's, I think it's a great park. I was really excited to see the regulation soccer field because this is the most precious thing in all of Malden facilities is regulation-sized soccer fields, which can also be used for lacrosse and field hockey and everything else. I was looking through the permits. It looks like Malden U Soccer is really the only group that's using that soccer field right now on a regular basis. Because I understand it's not regulation, but do we know, do we have a sense of like, what's going to be available for the year or so while this is offline for the folks who had been using that field was one question I had.
It's a good question. I think the Rec Department will have a fuller answer, but I know, I actually spoke with Joe Levine this morning and he mentioned that Malden U Soccer has also been using Linden, the Linden Field, and that they can also use Ambridge. So, I don't know, we weren't having a discussion of, about this in particular, but I know that those can be used for soccer as well. And I can get a fuller answer from him and communicate that out to you.
Yeah, they definitely use Ambridge. That's where my, that's where I'm at on Saturday mornings these days with my kid. So, I, I would just say that I think overall, it's very helpful to take such a good portfolio view to all of the parks that we have and create as many options as we can. So, I'm, whenever we're doing another park and we're fixing fields by any of our schools, I think that's very helpful because it gives us options for ways to re, you know, spread things around. And so, I'm just really excited to see that that will come online and look forward to the flexibility that provides. Thank you.
And if I could just add a, a thought there. One of the things we're trying to accomplish in our open space and recreation plan, we have another community meeting tomorrow night if anyone is wanting to attend that.
6:00 PM?
The YMCA. 6:00 PM at the YMCA. Come and join us. But one of the things we're hoping to do is take a really, take a more strategic approach to how we manage our park upgrades so that when we say, okay, three years from now, this park is going to be offline for a year and a half while we make field improvements. And so, what does that mean for all these user groups and where do we put them elsewhere? And our hope is that eventually, as we continue to make these investments in our parks, we're going to be able to say, okay, well, this park needs a rest period every X number of years, right? And so, when that year comes up, we have the capacity to move folks off of that field so that, that grass can recover and that we actually have the ability to do that instead of what has been happening where we have so much demand, which is a wonderful thing for our grass fields, but it's very difficult for the fields to sustain that. So, we're hoping that with these management practices, we can squeeze a little bit more. But it takes a lot of investment, so that's what we're trying to do here today.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Just want to say congratulations to Counselor Condon in the Edgeworth neighborhood. You know, you've really turned this park into a gem and it's definitely a, a project that should be, you know, celebrated by all. I have been recently inspired by archaeology, by our, by Ward Three's first gentleman, Mark Linehan. You know, we did a tour of the Bell Rock Cemetery. And I, and one of the reasons why I mention that is because I feel like at some point I saw maybe a postcard shared by the Levine's at some point, maybe, that this park used to be used by the military potentially for training. There might have been, been some barracks on it. And so, the reason why I mention it is who knows what you might come across as we dig up this field. And we might want to, let, let the contractors know that if they find anything that could be archaeologically significant, they should let us know because it could be something that we want to, you know, bring to the Malden Public Library or, or display. Or gold. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. I wish you had mentioned that a year ago because we threw out so many toy soldiers that were, no, no, we didn't find anything this time around, but we did have a really good contractor who, as soon as he saw something was weird with the ash, he called us and he stopped until we talked about it. So, we were very lucky to have a communicative contractor on this project who, if he had hit something, would have called us first thing. So, we feel really lucky about that. The, the military building on site, I don't know about training facilities, but I know that after World War II, there were temporary, there was temporary housing for veterans returning who didn't have a place to go. And so, there were temporary structures on Dever Park at that point. There may have also been training beforehand, I'm not sure.
Very cool. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Counselor Linehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I also just wanted to say congrats. I spend a lot of time at this park since the new section has opened. I wanted to kind of highlight the ways that I think it's increased equity in the city. I think because of not just the climate resilient features, like having the splash area and having a lot more cooling and shade. It's just I, able to support a lot more programming that's allowed the Rec Department to expand for the middle school ages. And for the first time ever, we have a summer girls' middle school basketball league now. We just didn't have the space for that. And so, that's something that certainly I benefit from because that happens to be a sport that my daughter plays. But the first week that that opened, there was like 100 kids that came. It was so big that they had to split it up into multiple nights and just the layout of the park is so thoughtful. It allows them to kind of do drills on one part and then run full scrimmages on the other end. And also, like, when these games are over, you know, there's Little League happening at the same time, there's soccer. The kids all kind of come together on the playground because it's, it suits a lot of ages, which a lot of our parks have struggled to keep up with that. And so, the span of like the little, little ones, all the way through tweens, like if you can keep tweens happy, you're really doing something. And this park just, honestly, everything about it, it's like multi-age, all the different sports can coexist. It's gorgeous. And like the families like hanging there too while those kids' sports are happening because there's benches and the time, amount of times I brought my laptop and like set up at those little high-top tables and just called into work when I had to be watching a basketball game and also on a work call, like it really supports people coming together and just staying there. And I can tell people like being in the park. So, I just wanted to say congrats. It's super well done and I hope it can be a model for our other large-scale projects.
Thank you very much.
And we know with Felsmore Heights and Ambridge, maybe there'll be some thoughts coming out. So, good. So, I, I'm just going to add a few things. So, no, it's, it's wonderful. Great, great work to, to Edgeworth and Fall. Thank, thank you so much for being a leader on this. It's, it's wonderful seeing these transformations happening. And thanks so much to Community Development and the Mayor's Office for all supporting this. So, I certainly very supportive of this and that. And I just had, I had one question about the fill that's coming in. Do you have a sense right now how many inches that's going to be? Is that going to be a significant amount?
It will likely be significant because of that, that grading issue, but we don't know the scale of that yet.
Okay. Do, I mean, one of the things, you know, I had to deal with some of this stuff in Gloucester. I suggest while you're doing some of your environmental soil testing, you might want to take a few deeper samples to see what's under there because one of the dynamics of these older parks is sometimes they were wetland areas and you have to be conscious of what you're putting stuff on top of because it might settle down. So, it's just something that, while you got a drill rig out there, you might want to go down a little bit further to find out what's below any ash or anything like that just to be sure that, you know, that, that that's taken care of, you know, one of the things. And is there going to be, you know, with the shift in the kind of crowning the field and doing that standard thing, is there going to be any drainage on the outside? Or is that a necessary thing to put in?
There will be drainage improvements included as well.
Right.
The exact specifications of which we haven't determined yet. So that'll be more of a final design stage.
So there'll be some, yeah, so there'll be some-
And we'll bring in engineers and we'll probably do some geotech-
Right.
To your point around like what the, what the soil further below can support.
Yeah, so that's certainly something to be conscious of. And right now, the budget, is there a, is there any allocation for further ash contingency? Is there something built in or is it kind of a?
We have some, but it's really hard to say at this point. I mean, we could, there's a, there's a huge range. So it's very, very difficult to budget for. So that's really why our next step is figuring out what our environmental, you know, making sure that these unknowns become knowns.
Right.
And then we'll be able to say more, then we'll be able to kind of firm up our scope a little bit better and determine a more silent budget.
No, it's fantastic. And, and, you know, let us know as things progress with the environmental work, you know, if there's anything else that we need to do because we need to make sure this all happens. It's a, it's a great project. And, I mean, in urban areas, you, you come across these things as you've, you know. So it is good that we're doing that testing in advance of going out to bid so, so we know about before it. So that's great that that's going to happen. So fantastic work. And, I mean, I was out there just yesterday with, for the veterans dedication. Everybody should go out there. The Ward Six claim now is that William Trafton, Corporal William Trafton, World War I soldier who died, first Maldonin died in World War I. The image of the World War I war doughboy out there is, is based on him. So it's a beautiful statue that happened out there. And, and as I was walking back, tons of kids playing, tons of bicycles out there. I got to say that too. A lot of kids biked there, so that was good to see. So, but, you know, just wonderful and just, it's a great thing. And then, you know, Trafton is coming together. And I guess in the springtime, we did, at Trafton, one of the things we did was we took out a fence. So there's some potential to have some soccer, like really young kids at Trafton and that type of thing too. So, and the basketball court and the tennis courts are being highly used. So it's all great to see these, you know, flexibility built into our parks to really accommodate and make, makes, make things happen. So this is a great example. So thank you so much. So, so I will, I guess we'll entertain a motion. Councilor Condon's motion to, to pass the resolve and seconded by Councilor Crowe. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, so the, the resolve is passed and the $500,000 grant is authorized. All right, and now, next, we will go to, next, next order of business then.
Paper 412-24, Order That the Finance Committee Invites Staff From Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development to appear in committee to present an update on the status of all funding sources regarding the remediation of soil by Rose, at Roosevelt Park, sponsored by Ari Taylor.
Councilor Taylor for the paper.
Thank you. So I, I know I've been in contact with OSPCD and Alex Pratt over the past several weeks. And they are working on, there are some questions that, that need to be answered before we'll know exactly whether or not the funding can be used and, and what's going on. So I'm asking that we put it into the finance committee so that when they have those answers, you know, we're able to work together and, and have them come out to a committee.
Okay, let's see. I have a couple of lights, so we'll take that. Councilor Colone Hayes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, no, thank you very much. There's nothing to add to that. Just want to thank the sponsor for the paper and ask if it would, if I'd be able to be a co-sponsor on that, would you mind? Thank you.
All right, so Councilor Colone Hayes. Councilor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll be setting up a finance meeting to talk through all these. I just want to let folks know that I think we have had some really good information already shared from OSPCD. And just to be, you know, really crystal clear, there's no concern about misaccounting of funds or anything like that. But there are, there are dangling authorizations that have not been resolved. And I think we still have some questions about what can be used for what purpose. So I think it's an opportunity to dig into those things. And I, you know, I'm glad that we have this, this public meeting coming up on Thursday that Councilor Taylor is hosting. And I think it's, I think it's appropriate that that come first so folks can ask some broad picture questions. And there's going to, I know there will be related information there. But this will give us a chance, given what we learned at that meeting, to just dig in, dig in a little bit more towards, you know, what's possible, given what has been already been authorized from a fiscal perspective and, and where we hope to go from there. So it's, it'll be an open conversation. I'll make sure it's, of course, like our other finance committee meetings, available on Zoom because I know there's a lot of interest on this project. And Councilor Taylor will be looking to you too. Thank you for filing this paper. And I'll be talking to you about when you want to schedule that meeting.
All right. So I just, I had a question for Councilor Taylor. So, so there is, can you tell us a little bit about the Thursday night meeting? And then you expect that then there'll be a finance committee afterward. So let me just get your light up here. So explain a little bit about how Thursday night's meeting might relate to the finance committee meeting and that type of thing.
So there, there will be some updates. We will have the Chair of the CPC there to talk a little bit about the CPC portion. Our Treasurer, Dan Grover, will be there. Alex Pratt, Debbie Burke, and a representative from Nangle. Trying to go over it all. Jim Parker. Yes, thank you.
So what day and time is that?
That is this Thursday night at 5:30 PM in council chambers. So it'll be, basically, everybody will have a chance to, to talk a little bit about their part in the project and what's going on and where they're at. And then there will be time for questions as well. Just so we have all of the information out there. I think there's a lot of dangling questions and a lot of information just kind of being spread arreously. So this will kind of like bring it all in and have all of the key players there to explain their part. And then we can go from there, look at the next step, break it down so that we can get a really good foundation built to make a positive plan going forward, depending on what the resources we have available are and ones that we can, can get at a later date. So that's, hopefully that explains it.
So, and then, and then there'll be that meeting on Thursday, and then Councilor McDonald will schedule that finance committee meeting?
Yeah, we'll follow up with OSPCD and make sure they have the answers from HUD and have talked to the funding sources, you know, and gotten a clear, concise answer of what we can do. Since the project was canceled, you know, is it possible to still go after that funding? That's a lingering question that we really need to have clearly answered by the funding sources.
Okay. So I don't see any other lights. So on Councilor Taylor's motion to pass the resolution, seconded by Councilor Colone Hayes or Councilor Semenelli? Oh, referring it to finance. Okay, Councilor Taylor. Okay, so it is, or it's an order? So on Councilor Taylor's motion to adopt the order, and that, and it's the order is to refer this to finance. Just pass the order? Yeah, because we're not doing, there's no finance base. All right. So it, so this, so this is what we're voting. Order that the Finance Committee invites staff from the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development to appear in committee to present an update on the status of all funding sources regarding the remediation of soil at Roosevelt Park. So that's, that's the specific item that would be, that we're, the order that we're voting on. And we're not, we're not asking any for, would there be a committee report back on that or we just?
The committee will, the committee may choose to come back and update the council on what was discussed, but it won't necessarily need to come back for a further vote because it's simply an order to have a meeting with Strategic Planning and Community Development.
So, all right. So, okay, Councilor O'Malley.
I, I agree with the city clerk. I think that probably the best way to do it so that you know what paper number to put in is that if we just pass the order and, and refer the matter to, to the Finance Committee. Because when you put it on the docket, don't you kind of need a, a, like a docket number? Could you do both, pass it and just refer the matter?
Something like that, yes.
Because I think you, I think you're correct. The, the council is ordering the Finance Committee to do this.
Yep.
So on the, and then on the, the Finance Committee docket, it would just be 412-24, right? Wouldn't that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's, this will be docket as 412-24. So I, so all right, so on Councilor Taylor's motion to adopt the order seconded by Councilor Semenelli, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, so that order is adopted. And now, next order of business, we'll go back to the hearing. Thank you for your patience out there, so.
Paper 415-24, Order That the City Council Adopt a Residential Exemption of 30% in a Minimum Residential Factor for FY 2025 Tax Rate As Presented by Assessor Nate Kramer.
All right, so Nate Kramer?
Hi, everyone. Let's just make sure this is still-
All right.
Connected.
Okay, all right. We'll just wait one second. We have a hearing notice. Did people? Okay, I'll see if they have. Okay, really? Is that your laptop there? Okay. All right. So, so we'll let Paul.
All right. How fast you want it? All right. Well, it's, is it still big down there?
You need a posting note to put over the camera? All right, there we go.
Better?
Thanks, Alex.
Okay.
All right, so Fiscal 25 Classification Presentation. This is actually my fifth one since I've been here. I can't believe it. It's gone so fast. Yeah. Right? So, tonight, as you all know, we're selecting a minimum residential factor and whether or not to grant the residential exemption. The minimum residential factor is, so a factor of one would meet a single tax rate. So same rate as residential or commercial. If we didn't have the residential exemption, would be $10.08. Just, just letting you know, that's what it would be if we didn't have a shift and we had a single rate. We would have a single rate of $10.08 for Fiscal 25. Chapter 200 allows us to shift, which we usually do as much as we can. And, yeah, historically, Malden has chosen the maximum allowable shift to afford residential taxpayers the lowest share of the tax burden allowed by state law. For Fiscal 25, the year that we're, the calendar year that we're looking at is 2023. So the change that we're going to see in Fiscal 25 is what occurred from calendar 22 to calendar 23. So I just have calendar 24 in there right now to show what's going on so far this year. It's showing that it's stabilizing a little bit, but the year's not over yet, so who knows what will, will actually happen. But certainly not as steep as it has been the past couple of years. Oh, and that, those numbers are not from, those are not assessed values. Those are actual market sales, averages of market sales prices. So our MRF options, I broke it out into a few different scenarios. We typically go for the full shift, 1.75%. This year, we're actually, our maximum allowable shift is 1.74. And the reason for that is because the, the residential class is still required to pay a certain percentage of the whole levy. And because the residential values are going up so fast and the commercial properties are actually coming down a little bit, it's making it so we can't actually go to a full shift. So 1.74 is, is the number for this year. At 1.74, the minimum residential factor, or the maximum allowable shift is 1.74. The residential tax rate would be around $11.33. Sometimes that can change a little bit during the DOR approval process. And the estimated, average estimated bill for residential is $8,975. That does not include the residential exemption. For commercial, industrial, and personal property, the average value is 1.424. And the average tax bill for commercial, industrial, and personal property, at the $17.54 tax rate, which is what's proposed for Fiscal 25, would be $24,993.80. So they're both going down. Both the rates, not the values. Here are the rates from the past few years. So this year, $11.33 residential, $17.54 commercial. And I have it, I have the past few years broken down, 24 all the way back to 20, what it's been. So they've steadily gone down, but that's because we've been in upswing the whole time I've been here. Can't wait for the market to start coming, coming down and the rates going up. That's always fun. The residential exemption, there are now 17 communities statewide that have it. Malden adopted it in 2008. The exemption in Fiscal 24 was $2,598. That's the amount off the tax bill for residential taxpayers that are eligible. For this year, this is a significant number. The 7,998 are currently eligible. So when I started, I think we're around 86 or 8700. So that could be for two reasons. One, we, I don't know if you recall, but I changed the way we did, the way we tracked it. And, but it also could be a sign that there are just less and less owner-occupied housing. So I, it's hard for me to tell what, what that actually is. But the highest number that we ever had, I think, was maybe around 8900 that we're getting at. There's a break-even point. So for Fiscal 25, the break-even point is 1.25 million and change. These numbers have actually all decreased. So last year, there were, I believe, 11 single-family homes that were above that break-even point. And this year, there's only eight, no condos. And then those numbers grow as, as the buildings get larger, which is essentially what, why it was adopted in the first place. Large apartment complexes carry the brunt of, of this, of this exemption. So this just shows the change. So the average residential value from 24 to 25, the tax rate, the tax bill, just showing the differences from 24 to 25. These are surrounding communities that also have the residential exemption and their, and their average residential tax bill with the exemption. So you can see that Malden's number that is significantly lower than that number I mentioned before, it's 6,063. These are Fiscal 24 numbers because not everybody has set their tax rate for Fiscal 25 yet. So it's just a better baseline to use last year's numbers. And you can see we're really at the lower, I think, of all those communities, Chelsea and Everett are the only two that are lower. And then this is just our border towns, how we look against our border towns, whether or not they have, I think, only Everett. Everett is the only one in there that has the, the residential exemption. So just as a comparison there. I have all of these printed out in color too, and I can give them to you guys if you want to look at them closer. Yeah, I have them with me. I can pass them out when I'm done if you want. Oh, okay. So for this year, historically, we would elect to do the maximum allowable shift, which is 1.75 this year. Because the residential values have gone up so, so far, we are only allowed to do 1.74. And for the- And for the residential exemption, I just calculated everything at the 30% because I didn't hear anything otherwise from City Council. Any questions? Thanks. Anybody know what I just said?
All right, actually, I, I just have a question, Neat. Just in terms, I know there's concerns of commercial property values kind of softening. How, how might that affect anything, or is it?
How might that affect?
Yeah, like if commercial property values don't go up as quickly or even come down compared to residential, does that shift more the tax burden on the residential, or does it other commercial properties?
So right now, it is softening, they are still going up, but they're not going up as fast as residential. So I believe overall, maybe the commercial industrial class went up right around 3%, where this year the residential maybe went up 6%. So the, the, the share of residential value is just increasing faster than the commercial is, and that's why that shift can't go to the 1.75, because by law, the residential class has to pay a certain percentage of the whole levy.
So if that trend continues, that 1.74 could keep going down or something like, but may or may not.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's, if I knew, I wouldn't be working in Malden. Who knows how it'll, how it'll shake out.
All right, and then we have Counselor Crowe.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. So how, I know in the past I've called you, a constituent has asked me, am I getting it? Am I not getting it? Have I applied? So is there a way, besides me calling you or having them call you, for someone to look and see if they submitted the things correctly, if they are getting it? Because I know they have to sort of reapply.
Yes, so they don't have to reapply. The only time folks have to reapply is if there's a change to their deed. So whether they put it into a trust, they get a divorce, someone dies, or, and they remove somebody's name. If you refinance your house, you don't, nothing happens to your deed, it stays the same. So they can, so, so once they apply, unless something happens to their deed, they don't have to do anything else. And when people do apply, we try our best to, we get a lot of emails over the weekend and stuff, so we try our best to respond and tell people we're all set. Usually, more often, we're replying and saying, get us this, or get us that for them. But, but you can just call, or email, or. So the thing about the, on the GIS, that's only updated once a year. So if you just got the residential exemption for Fiscal 25, you might not see that until, I would have to ask Steve Fama, but it would, you might not see that till February. Like it might not be updated, and once it's updated in February or January, whenever he does it, it's not updated again until the following year. And that's typical with any community, it's just usually updated once a year.
Thank you. I'll be calling.
Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you for the, for this. Have, I have a question. So when, when there's a change like that, like if someone puts a property into trust, or they remove someone from the deed because they passed away, if they call ahead to let you know that that's going to happen, is there a way that they don't lose out? Isn't there something where you can only apply, like at a certain time?
So there are deadlines. They, people have until April, so even for Fiscal 25, they have until April 1st. So we're halfway through Fiscal 25, and it ends June 30th. But they have until April 1st to, to get it in, so almost a full year. And I think really where they, where they notice it is in the third quarter tax bill, which comes in January. So they, if they're looking at their bills and they notice it goes up, and I, and that's one of the biggest issues we have, is a lot of people's tax bills are paid through escrow accounts. So they don't even know that their bank just paid 800 or 900 dollars more towards their taxes until they get a letter saying that their escrow amount increased. So I would just encourage people to actually look at their tax bills and see what, see what it is, make sure, and if they saw a spike, there's a good chance they were removed from the program for some reason. And then they have four months, or three months, to take care of it.
And if they see that, they provide you the documentation, are they, are they needing to file an abatement to get that back for?
It depends on when. So if they do it during the third quarter, then it would be reflected in their third, their fourth quarter bill. If the abatement is more than their fourth quarter bill, then the difference would be abated or credited to the next?
It would reflect as credit at the end of fiscal year, and then we would issue refunds after June 30th, some period after that when it goes.
It was getting into Dan's territory, so I looked.
So basically, the message is if you're changing things to your deed, for whatever reason, putting it into trust, removing someone from it, maybe call ahead to ask for the best way in which to make sure that they don't lose out or anything. And then you, you mentioned abatements, how have abatements been? Have there's, has there been an uptick at all, or is everything?
Can you repeat the first part of that?
Have there been, has there been uptick in abatement, or abatement requests, or evaluation?
Like, abatement request in terms of?
What's it called, like when people challenge, like the valuation of their house?
So, that's an abatement, but some, everybody has a loose term for, I wasn't sure if you're still talking about the residential exemption. So I believe it's steadily going down. I think in Fiscal 24, we were in the 50s somewhere, which is, which is pretty stable. 23, I think we're around 67. Somewhere around there.
A sign that you're doing a good job.
Yeah, until you start getting around like 10, that means probably everybody's undervalued because they're not filing. So you want to see a healthy number. I'd like, I like where, I like where we are. Based on no metric, but if it's, if it's under 100, that's, that's good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody, any more questions? Counselor Condon, did you have anything? Okay, all right, okay. Well, with no further questions, we would, all right, all right, so I will open the, I will open the public hearing. I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the order to set the tax rate, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody coming to, come forward?
Bob Donnelly opposed last year, I don't know if you remember.
I don't see anybody stepping forward, anybody? All right, going once, going twice. All right, so that portion of the hearing is closed, hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion hearing closed. Is anybody here wishing to speak in opposition to the order to set the tax rate? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody speaking in opposition? All right. I do not see anybody stepping forward, so. Hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. And then on Counselor McDonald's motion to approve the order, seconded by Counselor Condon, Clerk will call the roll.
Can I get clarification on exactly?
Yep, so.
A motion to, so we are making a motion to.
Don't really know where my screen went here.
Set the tax rate. As well as approve the residential.
The, the ma, minimum residential factor of .9099 is what you're, what you're voting on, and then the residential shift, the residential exemption at 30%.
Got it, thank you. Oh, well, I wanted to read it into the record. Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to be clear on what we're doing, thank you. Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Taylor. Counselor President Winslow.
Yes.
So that passes 10 to 0, and then also, I just want all counselors to see me to sign off on this. Before we leave here tonight, if you would, please. Thank you.
Oh, if you could sign it now, I'll upload it tonight.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll sign it, let's see.
No, because there's still a majority.
Okay, good, all right, great, thank you. We'll pass out along.
So do I sign it, or should I, should I sign it down here?
Yep.
Just right here?
Yep.
All right, you can sign this, quote unquote. All right, why don't, we're just going to take a moment pause to sign this, and then we'll, should we, should we, do people want to go into personal privilege? Let's see, yeah, because we, everything, the document is clear, then we can go into, why don't we go into personal privilege while people are signing here? So press in if anybody wants to go. Okay. All right, so Counselor Linehan?
I'll be super quick. I just wanted to let folks in the community know that we don't have a, a date set yet, but sometime in December, we're looking to have a community meeting on the Malden Hospital project, believe it or not, it's really chugging along, and we only have a few more months until we're going to be looking at kind of the building envelope and getting, you know, some real visible progress. So just want to let folks know, we'll be posting that on all the city's social media pages, it'll be a community meeting most likely on a Monday or a Thursday night, something, we're just finalizing the date. And then I also wanted to let folks know that we're working as hard as we can to reopen Hospital Road. I know that's been a frustration that the 99 bus is not servicing that neighborhood. We've had some unexpected issues up there with the curb cuts in the sidewalks and some utilities, but working as fast as we can to get that reopened for folks, and that's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I said it again, that Thursday night, November 14th, at 5:30 at Council Chambers, we will be meeting to discuss Roosevelt Park, and I hope to see as many people as possible. It also will be on Teams, and that's been posted around, and that has a translation feature for folks who need translation services. And then quickly, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out to the Haunted Woods. We had over 300 people, it was a great time, and we are already starting to plan for next year, so. That's all I got.
Great, thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Imani Temple here in Malden is going to give their tur, do their turkey giveaway. They did it, actually for a number of years, I was there last year though, it was tremendous. They gave of turkey, all the fixings, and that is Saturday, November 23rd. Time is from 12:30 to 3:30, again, at the Imani Temple Church on Saturday, November 23rd. You do not need to register, it is first come, first served, and again, they had everything that you would need for a great Thanksgiving dinner for free. So please, if you need to, take advantage of that, thank you.
Counselor Sika?
Thank you, Counselor President. I have a few messages. So Thanksgiving is just about two and a half weeks away, if you can believe it. Counselor Spatafora, along with Counselor Crowe and Detective Kelly and I have been busy at work behind the scenes, and I, I am happy to report that we have secured 136 turkeys in the past 48 hours for the Bread of Life. Most people may not know this, but I am a crazy couponer, and I found them extremely inexpensive on Amazon Fresh. So the person that has been delivering them to my door, I've been getting 12, sometimes 24 turkeys at a time onto my front porch. They are, and since yesterday was a holiday and the Bread of Life is closed, we had a jockey around, we had them at Anthony's, I have some at Mix 360, but it's safe to say they're all in the hands of the Bread of Life as of 5 o'clock this evening, when I dropped off the final 12. They are still in need of instant potatoes, cranberry sauce, and stuffing. So if anybody is in the giving spirit this holiday season, you can have them delivered to, directly to the Bread of Life at 54 East Nav, or you can drop them off, or you can drop them off here, or you can message me. I'll come and pick them up and make sure they get to where they need to go, but they are in need of stuffing. Instant boxed mashed potatoes, it's easier for them to make those specific kinds due to the amount of people that they're serving. I think they're expecting 1,300 mail deliveries alone, that does not include the sit down dinner that is at Malden High on Thanksgiving Day. So if anybody, again, would like to donate, you can reach out, or you can contact the Bread of Life directly. The next thing that I'd like to discuss is our Home for the Holidays Street Hockey Tournament, that is also just about two and a half weeks away. Signups are underway. If you haven't signed up to be on a team yet, you can sign up at maldenrec.com. It's $30, an entry fee with a new unwrapped toy you're supposed to bring that day to kick off the holiday season, it's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, Saturday, November 30th. At 8:00 AM, we will be kicking off the festivities of the street hockey tournament. We are going to have an official ribbon cutting of the newly renovated Linden Hockey Rink, and we will also be dedicating that rink to Sergeant Mike Giadano, who passed away. Actually, his anniversary will be the very next day, it's been three years since Mike has passed, and he was an avid hockey player and loved all things hockey. If you know anything about Mike, he had this wooden Stanley Cup that he, during Stanley Club, Cup playoffs, he used to drill it to the front of his house, and he had pieces for every game that the Bruins won, and he would go out and drill, it looked like a little brick, until he made the Stanley Cup on the front of his house. His kids are actually still, you know, doing that tradition, which is amazing. So if anybody would like to participate or just come down, we have Boston Burger, who will be slinging burgers for the day. And it'll just be a fun event during a holiday weekend. And then finally, Detective Kelly and the Malden Police have put online for the, our annual toy drive with the fire department. I've had, last week or so, I think November, the calendar switched, and I've been getting inundated with messages on how you could, you know, is there anybody that can help me this year with toys, yada, yada, yada. So if anybody is in need of receiving gifts this holiday season, they can email Detective Kelly at R Kelly, K E L L E Y, at maldenpd.com. She has officially lists started, and we will be taking requests for toys up until December 17th. And then we will start the delivery process after that. So if anybody would like to donate for the toy drive, they, we have a wish list that is on the Malden Police Department Facebook page, it's on my Ward Counselor page, there's a link for an Amazon wishlist, or we'll take any unwrapped, you know, brand new toy that you're willing to donate to us, you can drop them off at the police station, which is 800 East Nav. And you can see Detective Kelly or anyone, I think they usually have a box that's in the lobby of the fire station, and all, I mean, excuse me, the police station, and all the fire stations will also have boxes as well. So if you can't make it down to the police station, you can drop it off at any one of your local fire stations, so, thank you, sorry. Busy month.
Counselor O'Malley?
I just wanted to remind everyone, I know it was mentioned earlier, there's going to be an open space recreation and art plan meeting happening tomorrow night, Wednesday, November 13th at 6:00 PM. The location will be the YMCA on Dartmouth and Mount Nav, 99 Dartmouth Street, so hope to see you there. Lots of great work going on in, in OSBCD related to this, specifically like how are we going to, you know, plan for our parks in the future, how are we going to incorporate art? So please show up, it's, it's really an important plan to have, and it allows us to get grant funding to, to really build the next generation of our parks. I want to thank Counselor McDonald and Counselor Taylor for both saying the word dangling for the first time at a City Council meeting. I don't think I'd ever heard that word mentioned in a City Council meeting before, so now it's been three times. Thank you.
We don't have any dangling chat, okay, all right. All right, a few things to, to follow up just a little bit on Counselor O'Malley's announcement about the open space and rec and art plan tomorrow at 6 o'clock. Actually, yeah, tomorrow, I did work with staff in the YMCA. There, there is childcare available tomorrow night at the Kid Zone, so if parents want to come out and their kids could go to the Kid Zone, so there's, that's free. So if, that's, that's something that's holding you back, definitely come out for that. To follow a little bit about, about Bread of Life, Bike to the Sea this Saturday from 10 to 1 is doing something called Cranksgiving for the first time. So asking people who want to bike to bike down to Bread of Life, and it'll be sort of like a scavenger hunt, to go out and get those things that Counselor Sika talked about in terms of boxed mashed potatoes, boxed stuffing, vegetables, and gravy mix, to go and bike through the community, go out and get. to go and bike through the community, go out and get those things and bring them back to the Bread of Life. So that's happening from 10 to 1 on Saturday. And then just on Thursday at 7 o'clock in Malden Public Library, I'm going to be doing a presentation on my visit to Malden England. If anybody's interested, that's there, and it's, it'll also be on Facebook, so if you wanted to, I'll send out the Facebook link if anybody wants to see that. The, the Malden Public Library now has set up Macario Room to allow live meetings on, well, on, on Zoom, it's actually not, so that you can do live, live meetings on Zoom at Malden Public Library. So that's a nice thing, they didn't have that capability, but now they do. So I hope some people can come out, can see a little bit about Malden England, and I continue to work on getting some more artwork outside of the city council office and the mayor's office, so hopefully in the next, maybe by early December, we'll have that set up, and we can have a little reception up there, but it's all coming together.
What's the date and time of your talk?
My date and time is, it's Thursday, November 14th, 7:00 PM at Malden Public Library in the Macario Room, so, and people can, yes, and you can, you should be able to come here and hear about Roosevelt Park at 5:30, and then at 7 o'clock, come down to Malden Public Library and hear about Malden England, so. All right, anything else? All right, so not hearing anything else?
You adjourn.
On Councilor O'Malley's motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilor Crowe, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.